We ready, Bob? Okay. Evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 7th, 2019. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. If you had an opportunity to take a look, and would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 30th, 2019.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move to the approval and sale.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it's supposed to be on the vote.
Sure. Is this for something that's not on the agenda tonight?
I'm not sure if the response is on the agenda. It's valid or ciley.
Yes, so we will, we will take that up actually right after the bond approval. So, thank you, thanks for your patience. So, approval and sale issuance of bonds, which we do on an annual basis. Jean Montgomery and Sue Nickerson from our financial team, treasurer collector and town accountant, respectively. And Joe Fisher participated in the sale today on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. So, Jean and Sue, if you want to take it away.
Good evening. We're here again for our annual request that the Board of Selectmen approve the sale of the issuance of a ban, which is a renewal document. It's basically a short-term loan that we're doing. So, we had a sale today for a 10 million, about $10.9 million bond anticipation note. We had, it was a competitive sale. We had, one, two, three, four, six bidders, which was a good response to the issuance of our debt. The low bidder, and we always award on a, on a bond anticipation note to the lowest net interest cost bidder, and it was JP Morgan Securities who bid a 1.67 percent, which is a, a good interest rate. So, we have, so we're basically, we're borrowing $10.9 million for an interest, a net interest cost of $184,043. So, that kind of puts it a little more into the dollars and cents category for, for those of you at home. So, this is a multi-purpose borrowing. We've been rolling over portions of this debt for a number of years. Eight years on the Lincoln School Apartments for a capital project they had there, and then several other. A few land acquisition, a couple of CPC projects, some sewer improvements, appropriations, and more recently, the purchase of the new fire engine that is about to be unveiled, I think, shortly with the area apparatus.
Very exciting, yes.
So, that's included in this as well. So, we did complete the sale today. Joe Fisher was there with us to participate, and it did, we did award the bid to the lowest net interest cost, but this, for this sale to go through, it does require the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So, we're here tonight to request that you approve the sale.
Great.
I would just like to add that there was discussion that everyone was aware that there'd be upcoming borrowing with respect to acquisition of the water company, and it's being very well received. That had no disadvantageous effect on the interest rate. In fact, this interest rate is quite competitive, quite favorable to the town. So, all in all, it was a very successful, very productive discussion. So, at this point, I'd like to, unless you prefer the discussion?
Yeah, so, Mary?
I just, so, thank you. You know, when Jean and Sue do this, there's a lot of work that goes on to, sort of, that precedes this, these votes. And I would just mention to the audience that our AAA bond rating from all three rating agencies is a function of the quality of our management, and, and that very much starts with our finance team. And what a wonderful job they do in, in putting this together. I would just make two other points. The first one is that our AAA bond rating gives us access to the capital markets and to some of the lowest interest rates out there. So, if you think about your mortgage right now, or if you have a car loan, we're borrowing money for 1.7 percent. And, and that again is a reflection of the town's credit rating. And what that means are projects like the Lincoln School Apartments and the golf carts for the South Shore Country Club. What it means as taxpayers is that we're just not paying as much in interest as people are in other communities. And so, that means that, you know, when, when we collect your tax dollars, we're paying less for interest, which means we have more money to put towards personnel and teachers and other things. And I just piggyback on something Joe mentioned about the, the water company. In the financial analysis that the town has put together with respect to the water company, we're assuming we're going to borrow in the first year a bond anticipation note, so something like this. The interest rate we're carrying in the town's financial model is 2 percent. And so, here we just went out to market for, you know, 1.7 percent. So, again, we think that the interest rate assumptions that we have in our financing model are on the conservative side. So, it's helpful to see these numbers today to, to validate that.
And this is a, a number on a low debt issuance. This is on $11 million, and you're looking at a hundred, a much higher number, I won't get into the numbers, on the, on the water company. So, I expect you're going to see an even more favorable rate.
Even lower rate, yes.
I mean, the reason for that is that the larger the dollar amount, the more interest it generates. So, because we're doing a small amount, it's, oftentimes, you see higher interest rates. People just don't want to do the due diligence when it's a small amount of debt issuance. So, we're expecting quite favorable response with respect to the water company.
And just to note, last year was 1.81 percent. So, it's come down from last year, too.
I credit Joe with that. You know, to Mary's point, I think that the, the array of projects on here is, is, speaks to the diversity of the activities in the town and the ability to access the capital markets to support an array of services and capital acquisitions, I think, you know, again, speaks volumes for your management of our financial assets. Can you comment just quickly about sewer improvements? So, the town will issue the, the ban, you know, as part of the ban for sewer, but then that aspect of the debt service would be financed through sewer rates? Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that's two projects, it's for some sewer main work, and it's also for their I and I infiltration program. It's a combination.
Yeah, yeah.
Same with the golf carts that will be paid back through your Social Country Club revenue. And you have two projects on here, land acquisitions that were funded through CPC funds. So, those are covered through your CPC revenue, and they've already accounted for that in their own budget process.
Okay.
So, when you carve out, you know, the Lennart Properties and, you know, the recreation, well, recreation park, Hingham, the Hingham Heritage Museum and so forth, you know, the remainders are from your general obligation tax.
And Lincoln School Apartments?
They pay for their own.
Lincoln School Apartments pays for their own.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, Mary? Joe, any other questions?
No.
Questions from the public on the, the ban, the ban issuance? All right, seeing none? Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, and I actually did have a question before I ran through this whole process, is what is ban? What does that mean? It stands for bond anticipation notes, so, that's what it is. So, I would make a motion to approve the sale of a $10.989,505 dollar note, 2.75 coupon percent general obligation bond anticipation note. The notes of the town dated May 15th, 2019, and payable May 15th, 2020, to JP Morgan Securities at par and accrued interest plus a premium of $117,807.49.
Is there a second?
Do we have to do the whole thing? Or are those separate votes?
You do have to do them all. You can vote them, I guess, individually or in the aggregate. You can read them all down.
We can do the second, but then I think the others we may want to do some further explanation on, so.
Second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next vote?
Okay, further, I move that in connection with the marketing sale of the notes, the preparation, distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated April 24, 2019, and a final official statement dated May 7, 2019. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the next motion, do we want to ask the treasurer about the SEC requirements?
Part of when you, when a community issues tax-exempt debt, part of our responsibility is to be sure that we're complying. The SEC actually requires that you report any event that might affect, it could be a material or a financial obligation of the town. And that's, the next vote that you're going to be reading is pretty standard in all of our debt obligations. And that's part of the closing documents that we'll be receiving next week. You will have a section in there that you will all be executing, and myself as well, that we will be complying with the SEC rule. What's different this year is the SEC, which is the, Joe will help me with the acronym.
Securities and Exchange Commission.
Securities and Exchange Commission, thank you very much. The Securities and Exchange Commission has implemented two new events that municipalities have to disclose throughout the life of the debt on these obligations that went into effect in February. And one of them, it basically, rather than stumbling along, let me see what I have. The major change for the issuers here is that an occurrence of a financial obligation now needs to be provided or disclosed publicly within 10 days of the occurrence of this obligation. And they've expanded the concept of financial obligations to include things such as capital leases, or if a treasurer enters in, goes out and borrows a bank loan, maybe from the State House Loan Program, after they've issued this competitive type of official statement debt. Loans from the Massachusetts Subate and Trust have to be disclosed, and the responsibility is on the issuer, which is the town of Hingham, to report these financial obligations that have sometimes in the past kind of gone under the radar within 10 days of occurrence. So, the, what many of the buyers of our debt have, are requesting now is, they want assurances that the municipality has procedures in place to keep track of all of this, stay on top of leases that departments may be entering into that the treasurer herself may not be aware of, or the town accountant will be aware of it, but maybe well after the 10 days have gone by on the deadline. And so, we have taken the steps to develop disclosure procedures. We've updated the ones we already had in place. Those are actually enclosed as a, for you to look at. They were drafted by bond counsel, approved by the financial advisors, and this next furtherance vote is asking you to appoint the, allow the treasurer to create these continuing disclosure procedures, revise them as necessary as the SEC comes up with new requirements, and then I will take care of that. So, we have done that, so that issue, those who are buying our debt now are looking for proof, and this is the proof that we're done. Any questions?
Please vote yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're, what we're dealing with is SEC Rule 15C-212, for those who are following that, and I think the report that we just got amply discloses, discloses what needs to be done. If there are no further questions, are prepared for a motion?
Anybody from the public want to comment? I will take a motion.
I move that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute, deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking, undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-212 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference to the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. I'm just going to keep going. And further, I move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures to such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update such procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities law.
Second?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, this way.
Second? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more vote.
And then one more motion, which be each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, excellent work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we'll leave the documents in your office, and you all can sign them at your age. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Joe, thanks for that explanation. Okay, the next item on the agenda is coyote awareness. I'd like to call the chief and our animal control officer, Leslie Badger up. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening.
You know, we, we've all been, we've all been experiencing, I think, both individually and, you know, in our roles as members of the board, concerns about wildlife, increased sort of volume and aggression of turkeys, as well as perhaps more seriously increased activity of coyotes. And so, we've heard, we've heard you, we've heard you on social media, we've received calls and emails here at the office, and we've reached out to the chief and our animal control officer, Leslie Badger, to take us through some potential responses and education efforts.
I'll just let Leslie start it, because Leslie's been doing this, or she started doing some education probably about a month ago, and I think we are out there trying to do that, so I'll let her follow up with what she's been doing.
Thank you, chief, I appreciate that. I did start back in February, I hosted a presentation for the town residents and beyond. We had residents that came from abutting towns that were having issues with coyotes as well. And that night was geared around not just coexisting with coyotes, but how you yourself can be proactive in handling the coyote situation, not only for yourself and safety, but also in your yard and being proactive. Another part of it was understanding the roles that myself, fellow ACOs, and other wildlife officials take in dealing with the coyotes, because it's not as straightforward for myself to say, okay, I'm going to go out and put traps out, or I'm going to go and, and humanely put down a coyote. There's a lot that goes into it, and I'll quickly discuss that. My role as the animal control officer, unfortunately, I don't have that permission to just go out and put a trap. It is actually against the law. And trap a coyote and just remove it or relocate it. It's not allowed in the state to relocate any wild animal because of disease control. And that is the state's regulation. The only time we're allowed to trap is if the state determines that they feel that the coyote is an imminent threat, or is proven that it's showing signs of rabies, and at that time, then the state is involved, the departmental police, mass wildlife, and we all go out, and at that point, we try and locate that animal and humanely put it down. Because again, relocating is not an option for any wildlife in the state of Massachusetts. And in order to do any kind of trapping with healthy animal, you have to have a special license, and that's why myself and all ACOs will say that you have to seek out that wildlife removal service that has that pack license to be able to do that. We do not. We are, what we're supposed to do is sick and injured. So, anything that is considered sick or injured that needs to be taken care of, we can handle. So, there is a difference. Also, the second part, as I said earlier, is being proactive.
Do you want me to have the cameras put this?
If you want to, that's fine, because I'll read from it. Is being proactive. A lot of people, when I speak to them, ask me, you know, I don't understand why these coyotes are coming into my yard. There's a few reasons for that. The number one reason is because you have, you most likely may have some kind of food source, and I'm going to go down the list of a bunch of common ones, and you may be saying to yourself, well, I don't have any of that. You could be, unfortunately, the person that has the great pristine yard, but you're the cut-through, because a coyote's going to take the easiest way to get to the neighbor that has these things on the list. So, that's why it's important for those who, that say, oh, yeah, I have these on, on my list, to also realize that you may be affecting your neighbors who are working really hard to keep the coyotes out. So, that's why I also urge that for neighborhoods to not only take a stand for yourself and your yard, but work together as neighbors. And I will address that in my final part, how you can all work together. So, I'm going to go through this checklist that I put together, and I'll read the little part up at the top. Is it going to?
It'll be displaying on, it'll be displaying on TV.
Okay, perfect. These are some of the food sources our scents coyotes seek out to find easy, fast food in our yards. Instead of going deeper into the woods to hunt for the food they should be. If you have any of the items in your yard, we are not saying you cannot have them, but please secure, clean up daily, or remove to a safe location or inside. Working to secure these issues will not only help your own yard, your safety, but your neighbors, too, from coyote visits and sightings. Number one, chickens. Number two, water, water fowl, as in like domestic ducks, geese, domestic turkeys, guinea hens, anything like that. Those are all things that coyotes and fisher cats and foxes absolutely love, and if they can go after one of those that's easy to get in a yard, they will. Rabbit hutches, pets that live outside, or baby farm animals that can't protect themselves, you want to be careful of that as well. That's why it's important to have those structures. When I go around and do barn inspections, I always make sure I talk to those farms that have animals, and if they end up having baby animals in the spring, to be very careful with them and make sure they have a safe place, that they are secure, so they don't become an interest to a coyote, a fisher cat, or a fox. Compost piles, this is something that people are actually, I just talked to someone recently, were completely surprised. Compost piles is a huge one, and the first thing the person said to me was, but it's mostly fruits, vegetables, eggs, and some fish. Those are all things a coyote will eat. They're opportunists. They will absolutely help themselves, and even smaller animals will go in and eat anything in that compost pile. So, if it's not in a secure bin, which I've seen a lot of residents in Hingham starting to get the secure bins, there's different kinds, cost-efficient ones that you can rotate and have your compost pile, but you want to make sure that it's not readily available, because the coyote's not even, not only going to go after the compost itself, but it may take whatever small animal is there feeding off the compost pile. Bird feeders, that's a really big one as well. We're not saying, again, that you can't have bird feeders, but if you are, you want to make sure you clean up after them, because they will eat the bird seed, but they will also eat the smaller animals, once again, that are coming to eat the bird seed. Drip pans on grills and scraps from grills. This is another one that people get surprised by. It's really important to make sure you clean up your grills each and every time you use them. I know that's a pain, but coyotes are a scent animal, and they smell those nice juicy steaks that I've been cooking on the grill, those drippings, they go into the drip pan, they stay there for a while. And then people question, why is the coyote up on my deck? Because they're sifting around, trying to figure out where that amazing smell is coming from. They have no idea it's steak, they just know it smells really great, and they're going to check it out and come up on the deck or patio and go around the area of the grill. And if they can get themselves a bit to eat, they're going to, they're going to do it. Also, we have had some situations where people figured it was no big deal, they're grilling, you know, oh, that piece got burnt, threw it into the woods. Even that little bit, the coyotes run in through, grabs that, realizes there's a food source here, and has, has continued to come back to check that, even taking the drip pans and throwing it into the woods. Again, even though it might be a little amount, that's still something that the coyote smells and notices there, and is going to come around and check that, because they are an animal that likes to stick to a root and will continue to make passes through, especially if they're getting those food sources. Same goes for fire pits. I've been guilty of this, too. I've got a fire pit, and, you know, we all like to roast marshmallows or hot dogs or anything like that, and sometimes one gets burnt, and we just, we'll throw the whole thing in and wait for the next fire, or hope that the fire that's still going will just burn it up, and it will be all gone, but we don't realize till the next morning, half the hot dog's still sitting there. That smell, that half-burnt hot dog, or remnants of the marshmallow can end up, unfortunately, causing the scent to spread and bring a coyote in who's going to want to try and eat it. Another thing is leaving if you have a party. You don't want to leave food unintended overnight. We've had those issues where people have gotten up in the morning, and they've got wild animals in the yard because food was left out overnight. And then another big part of this is dog or cat waste, or, that builds up in the yard and isn't either hosed down or cleaned up. I have a lot of people that have called and said that I noticed my dog came in, and a few minutes later, a coyote was at our back door. I asked if that's the back door that the dog goes in and out of to go to the bathroom, and they're like, yes, it is, and that, well, that's because the coyote, again, runs on scent. So, the animal goes out, does its business, comes back in, coyote's running through to go to where it remembers its food source, smells that smell because it's so strong, and follows it to track it, to figure out what and where that potential food source may be, and unfortunately, it goes right to that door, because it follows the dog back to the door. So, it is important to clean up after and hose down, because that will take the scent out. Also, feeding your pets outside, if you do that, you want to make sure you clean up right afterwards. We've had a few people that didn't realize, and they just leave the food there, and they would come out later in the night to sit on the deck, and they've got a raccoon eating from the bowl, or a coyote. You also want to make sure, and I'm guilty of this, too, and I always have to go, every time my dogs go out, out back to chew a bone, pick them up, because we've had plenty of people call and say that the coyote or fox is sitting in their yard right now chewing on a bone. I get there, and I pick it up, and, well, I scare the coyote or fox off, pick it up, and it's the bone that belonged to the dog, and it wasn't brought in. They'll, they'll finish chewing it if it hasn't gotten all chewed up. Even if it is all chewed up, they'll still try and chew it, because the smell of whatever it was cooked in, from wherever it was sold from, will entice it to come in and chew on it. And then, last but not least, the most important, you always want to make sure trash, trashcans, dumpster, food wrappers, and anything that isn't finished eaten is always thrown away in a secure container. All of those things will, without a doubt, bring in a coyote or any wildlife. So, those are some important things, not only for yourself and your own yard, but are great to also talk to your neighbors about in a, in a kind, friendly manner, and let them know that, you know, we're seeing a lot of these coyotes. I would love to get together and work on this, just like we have neighborhood watches, maybe it's time we get to have, get together and have a little neighborhood group, and I can say this is something that I am starting. I've already worked with one neighborhood that was seeing a lot of coyotes. We got the whole neighborhood together on a Saturday afternoon, I'm sorry, Sunday afternoon, and we sat down, discussed coyotes. I gave them these handouts. We went over the whole checklist, and they're all working together right now to combat the issue, and they're doing a really, really great job of that. So, I'm happy, too, if neighborhoods want to get their neighborhoods together and come up with a plan to be able to combat the issue in a kind, friendly, neighborly way. I'm happy to do that. You can call my office, and we can try and set something up, or you can even email me as well. Other things that I have done as well?
It doesn't have to be on a neighborhood issue, too, if you just feel that you want somebody to come down and take a walk through your yard to identify certain things that may be attractive to the coyote population. Leslie will make an appointment to set up a date with you and come down and look at that. One of the things that, our learning was, I remember when I was a younger kid, everyone thought it was a great thing to just drag the brush out back, and I was always, oh, it's great, because you're making a great environment for the animals to live in. That was when we didn't have the population of the existing animals we do now. It's certainly changed over 40 or 50 years. If you have brush piles on your back, yeah, that's an attraction. Don't do that anymore. If you let your yard overgrow, the animals are going to be, they're, they're going to come into that encounter. You want to keep your yard open, because animals don't really like to be exposed to the open, because they become vulnerable themselves. So, the more clean you can keep your yard, the better off you are. Keep down the brush cut down low, so that you can see them and they can see you. It's your area, you want to own it, not them.
I would also urge, if you have sheds, patios, or decks that have any kind of opening that would be six inches or bigger, I would urge you to go around and check and make sure they are properly secure and closed. You can do anything as simple as chicken wire, you can get paving stones, depending on the size, and close up underneath, because those all make great places to have a den. And it can be anything from a coyote to smaller animal skunks, raccoons, fisher cats. We had someone that went away for the winter months and came home and started to notice a coyote was laying out in the backyard, and they couldn't figure out why, because, why it was doing it, because it would be there for a little while, then it would just disappear. So, I went out and checked the yard, and they had a shed way out in the back part of the property, and when I went out to the back part of the property, I rocked around the shed, there was a nice big hole dug under the shed where the coyote had made a den over the winter and made it home. So, that's why it's important to make sure, to check those, and, and to be able to look all around if you can, and if you have six inches or more of an opening, they can start digging and making a nice tunnel underneath there, and they make the perfect dens. So, I urge you to make sure those get closed up, because in the long run, they will save you from having any kind of animal come in and make a den in there.
I think right now, too, everyone should be aware that January and February are the breeding seasons. The coyotes, they have a 60, 60-day gestation period, so you're, as a matter of fact, I saw one today, a younger pup running across the street. It was small, though. It was smaller than a fox, but it was definitely a coyote. So you're starting to see the younger, the younger coyotes get out. And, you know, everyone loves a puppy. They're playful, they're all that kind of stuff. But I think we've got to learn, learn to identify these and have, and train people just to give them their space. Because a lot of times, they're just going somewhere. They're not really interested in what you're doing. But there's always a chance to encounter, and that's what we've got to sort of prepare for.
And Leslie, did you have some camera, accessing some wildlife cameras? Did you mention that earlier?
Yes. I have one now. I'm going to be getting more. If there is a situation where you feel like there might be something in your yard, but you're not sure, I can set up a trail camera to see if we can confirm that it is, in fact, a coyote that is going through your yard. So that is something I'm, I'm very hopeful we will be doing in the, in the near future. With the one I have now, it's usually reserved for the, the really serious cases, but I hope that I can be able to get it out more to be able to determine for sure if someone thinks they may have a coyote coming through the yard, or another issue at hand. Also, I wanted to make sure everyone knows, the presentation that happened back in February, it is online, you can find it on YouTube. But even easier, you can go to the Town Hingham Animal Control website page, either through the Hingham Police Department, or the Town Hingham page, and you will find the whole presentation, presentation in its entirety up there. And you can listen and, and watch the whole thing. I think it's a really great presentation, and these were the handouts that we handed out that night. And you will be able to hear everything that had to be said. We had someone from Fish, Mass, Mass Fish and Wildlife. We had the top veterinarian for wildlife here in Massachusetts, from New England Wildlife there. We had three other ACOs. We also had an environmental officer. And it was, it was a really great presentation with a lot of information that I think is useful for anyone that has a moment to sit down and listen to it. I think is a great thing to take that time. I also have these handouts in email form. So if anyone wants copies of these, you can email me, and I can email them back to you. Otherwise, we also have some in the Board of Health Office. And we're going to try and get them up on the website as well too, so you can view them that way, if that's easier.
And before we open this up for questions, I will tell you that the Hingham Police Department does not respond to people's social media accounts. So if you have a problem, it shouldn't be aired out on the social media. If you feel that there's an issue with a coyote, you need to pick up the phone and call the police, or call the animal control, because by the time it's made the rounds on social media, who knows what the story really is and what really happened? If you feel it's worth telling people the story on social media, then it should be worth telling it to the police, or to the animal controls. It's the only way that we can get fresh information. I know that we've taken calls when a coyote appears during the day. Coyotes appear during the day. They probably got flushed out because somebody was walking through the area, they're moving to another area. It doesn't mean that they're necessarily sick. It could be a sign that they're sick. So we will respond. I know you and a couple officers were over at, I believe, one of the schools, because at playground, someone spotted a coyote, and we stayed over there for a while, until the recess was over. So we will respond to these things, but we need, we need data that's real. And I think by the time it's filtered through social media. And I have no access to social media. You know, and so, but like I said, by the time it gets to me... I don't want to be on social media, by the way. But it really, I think it would be better off to take the time to call us and ask us to respond to it, or Leslie.
And to add to that, it is important, if you feel something serious enough just happened, because I have a better chance of trying to find that animal in that moment than hearing about it hours later, or days later, or even weeks later, in some instances, when people post it on social media. Because I, there's no way for me, no matter how much training I go through, to be able to determine that the coyote that, that you saw days ago, or weeks ago, is the same coyote that might be coming through again. It could be, but it may not be. So there's no way I can determine. And it's better to get there as quicker as possible, if it's a situation that needs to be addressed. And if I can't, then having an officer respond, or an environmental officer respond in my place to be able to, at that time.
Great. Thanks, Leslie and Chief. So just so you know how this will work, we'll take questions from my colleagues. And then, if you'd like to make a comment, or if you have a question, we'd ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address, and then direct your questions to me, and we'll make sure that someone can answer them. So Mary, I didn't know whether you had any...
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, Chief and Leslie, thank you. And, you know, Leslie, I appreciate the efforts that you've been making over the last couple of months, and I think it's, it's all very helpful. Couple of questions. You mentioned that, you know, you can't necessarily trap a coyote unless they, you know, they appear rabid, or they're perceived as a threat. You know, what, what constitutes an animal, I mean, what constitutes an animal behaving in a way that it's considered a threat?
For, and it's in the bigger handout, there's, the Mass Fish and Wildlife has a... There it is. Has kind of like a chart of what they constitute as most severe. So it would be in an instance where we would be told someone was attacked, or that situation. Or it was confirmed to be displaying those symptoms of rabies, or just temper.
And I, I think what's, what's difficult, and I realize a lot of this is the state, but I, I think a lot of us kind of like find ourselves saying, "Gosh, it's, it's really unfortunate that someone has to get hurt for, for us to take action." And I know, I know I struggle with that. I'm sure you struggle with it.
I do.
But, you know, do you have a comment on that?
I would be putting myself as well. I'm, I'm trying as hard as I can to educate, and, and to, to get out there, and to help best I can to help people be proactive, and to be able to deal with the coyotes, and, and, you know, have the proper education to know the difference between one that might be rabid or running through. I don't want to see anyone get hurt. I, I didn't take this job to have people get hurt. I took this job to help people, and to keep people from getting hurt. So I, I completely understand that, but I'm also in position, position where there's rules and regulations. And it's the same across the board for all ACOs.
Yeah. So I guess that leads to my second question, because I understand that, that this is regulated by the state. And I, when I first joined the Board a few years ago, I was having some conversations with some residents, and I actually talked to, you know, one of the, one of the people at the state. I guess my question is, is there anything that, as a community, that we can, that we can do with respect to our interactions with the state? Because I think, you know, it seems to me that the coyote population is growing, and...
I think the best...
I'm just wondering...
I would sort of speak on this. Just, there is a coyote hunting season. But in a residential town, in residential areas, we don't allow for discharge of firearms. We don't generally allow for hunting in the general. Trapping is illegal now. The only traps that can be used for a coyote is a Havahut-type lodge cage. And coyotes are very smart, and they just don't go into them. So it's a very inefficient way of trying to capture them. And then it's the issue of relocating them. So we're experiencing, you know, the answer to this is really complex, because so much has happened, and, you know, I mean, animals still have rights to live in areas that we live. And as the population moves into the areas that the animals lived, lived in, they're being displaced. And they're also learning to adapt to live with human beings. But they're still wild animals, and it's, you know, I mean, I think if we're going to look for a lot of resources, I mean, it's all we can do, is try to do what we can, like, is to create an area where they're not really welcome. You know, if there's any kind of, if we had a public area where you could treat, like we do with the geese, and they move them off the, the, down at the harbor there, because they, they change the grass to taste like pepper or something, and the geese won't eat it. You know, that's pretty difficult to go through. And it's, it's, it is a complex thing, but I think, like all animals, they're running cycles. Right now, it's a good cycle. You know, five years ago, you didn't see as many. And they will recycle as they overpopulate. Right now, we're having deer that are overpopulating. And the deer are becoming, the herd is, the health of the herd is actually going down, because we're having, being infected by, there's certain diseases that they're now being infected by. There's a, what's the name of the, the new breed that's...
The piebald.
The piebald deer, as you're seeing, they're white, and they look like goats, as opposed to deer. They're like, and that's all because they're overbred. They're, they're moving into an area that we, every time we build a house, we give them a food source. So the air, this whole concept, it's all we can do right now is battle. I mean, if you want to fight the change of laws regarding hunting and trapping, that would be an option, but I don't see that happening.
And I guess I would just add and echo the, the point that I do think that data and reporting is helpful, because I think to the extent that the town ever might want to take some steps to engage with the state, I think, I think giving, giving data is very helpful. And so I, you know, and, and I think when things, when things go through dispatch, they get logged, they get categorized. We have officers responding. Leslie, it seems like you never sleep, like you're always working. But, you know, there are times when, you know, you're not working, and, you know, somebody, you know, somebody needs some assistance. So I would just encourage people to route things through dispatch so that we can stay aware of the magnitude of the issue. We can provide response on a timely basis. And it also sounds like that'll help you do your job.
Yes, it will.
It will also help us in working with the state. And we're going to continue to work with the state, because, you know, hopefully, they begin to see this as a little different issue. This isn't like we're in Western Massachusetts, where the environment, where it's different. So it is going to just take some time. And the best thing, like I said, even if we go out there and, you know, you start to move around, if you carefully walk around your yard, and sort of look for areas that they're going to be hanging out in, just be active in your yard. And, and, and use your yard so that they know that you're the, you're the alpha out there.
To Mary's point on data, I mean, it may be also helpful to inform us as to whether we could take any additional actions on the local level. Like you mentioned, the compost piles, you know, that may be something that either the Board of Health, or the Conservation Commission, you know, begins to evaluate bylaw options, or town policy options, that would encourage this sort of neighborhood or town-wide standard around some of the attractive nuisance issues that you've, you've addressed? Any other questions? Joe?
Is there anyone at the state that our local residents should call? So I understand they can call you, but since it seems to be state regulations that we're dealing with, is there an animal control officer, or someone at the state level where we should be contacting?
You can call the Environmental Police. They, they have a 1-800 number that they, they'll take any calls and concerns. Mass Wildlife, I, that's one of the things I tell people, you, you feel free to call, because the more that people call, the more they're going to get the message. And you can, Mass Wildlife, Fish and Game, and Environmental Police are all the ones that, when we have an issue as an ACO, that's who we're calling and letting them know. And then they make the decision from there. So anyone is more than welcome to give them a phone call and talk to them at any point in time. And there's been a few times already that I've had them come out and help me look into situations. So they're aware of what's going on, but the other thing that is important to make you all aware is, Hingham's not the only one that's experiencing this. South Shore is, is having an issue. They're even having coyotes in Boston. There's one that was on the news for like the last six months. I think they, the, and Mercy League may have just finally caught it. But it, they're all over. It isn't just Hingham that's all of a sudden getting inundated with coyotes. It, it's happening everywhere. But the more that, you know, if people want to call, that's fine. You can call anyone on the state level, because it's going to let them know that, you know, Hingham's serious, and we're working hard to try and combat this issue. And hopefully, they, they will take notice and say, maybe it's, it is time we come up with some like regulations, or something that can be more helpful for our ACOs.
Anything else? So, you know, I, I share the concerns of my colleagues. I share the, the concerns that you've laid out tonight. I, I agree with the Chief that this is a complex issue. You know, the frustrating thing is, it changes our behavior as well. You know, it changes the way we use our yards. It changes the way we allow our pets and our kids to use our yards. It changes the way we use some of our open space in Hingham. You know, I've heard in particular, I think it was last year, accounts of coyote concerns in the Hingham Woods. You know, we're, we're a community that enjoys our open space, and, you know, this, this has, there have, there's definitely been examples of aggressive coyote behavior that's, that's troubling. So I, I, I think one of the things your talk tonight, Leslie, highlighted was really that I, I feel like if we're going to address it, we really need to address it as a community. You know, one neighborhood at a, at a time, but also community-wide. And so, you know, again, I think that we need to be thinking about the issues on your prevention list that maybe, you know, we introduce at the committee level in the fall to think through whether it's worth taking some action on, to create a set of community expectations around, around, I, I think what is a very significant issue. I, I live in a community cut, coyote cut-through area. I, our, on the side of our house, we're, we're right in between coyotes coming from Black Rock Country Club and going to Plymouth River School. I can't let, you know, my dogs out by themselves. I'm very cognizant of getting in and out of my car at night. So, I mean, it, it's definitely changed my behavior at my house. I know you've got a couple little dogs. It's, it's the same, same for all of us. So I think it, and, and, you know, and I do agree, I think that you're absolutely right. There is a cyclical nature to the population level of coyotes, notwithstanding that. Increased development, you know, here in Hingham and across the communities that we share borders with, have really limited habitat opportunities for, for these wild animals. And so it, it's, it's not going away. And, you know, I think it's come to a point that, you know, we need to think seriously about what steps we can take as a community to, to address this.
I think one of the other things I just mentioned, I was sort of, yeah, Leslie and I were talking earlier today, and it's amazed, amazing how many people have chickens nowadays. And, and part of it is the health, I don't know if it's, you know, the healthiness of owning your own chickens, and they're free-range, and you get, and you get eggs. But Leslie does barn inspections, and I, we were talking about, like, how many chickens do you have to have before you need some sort of a license or a permit? And she said ten chickens. So, I mean, that's something else that we don't, you know, maybe we should...
Yeah.
Hate to say this, but, you know, maybe we should look at getting permits for chicken coops. Because they spring up in unusual places. I mean, we have permits and, and regulations on where you can keep a horse. We have how many dogs you can keep in a house. And, you know, it might be something worth considering is, like, do they belong in certain areas? I know, you know, sometimes if they have roosters, roosters are being, they're not needed anymore for chicken laying eggs anymore. Unfortunately, my population is being faded out. So we used to have rooster problems, and that usually kept them out of the neighborhoods. But now that you don't have that, you can have chickens there without any noise issues at all.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I mean, I'm not looking to create a highly regulated state either. But, you know, but I think, I think having some reasonable expectations about community standards to address what I think is a, is a growing issue is something worth at least exploring. And then, I know, I know you're not a social media fan, Chief, but I think it may be, it may be helpful to see if we can find that February presentation and be able to post it on the website.
Oh, Leslie, we got that done.
It's already up and done.
No, I'm just talking about like being on the Hingham chats.
Yep.
No, no, no. And, you know, I agree with Mary's point. We can't, we can't, we can't deal with it unless we know about it. And we need to know about it in a, in an official way, to be able to respond to it. So, point's well taken. Anything else from either of you? Okay, so if there are questions or comments from the audience, again, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, my name is Karen Lottigiani. I'm actually not a Hingham resident. I'm an attorney representing my daughter Lauren, who lives at 11 Golf View, and my daughter Kara Lauren Gargan, and Kara Nealon, who lives at 22 Sherwood. Their streets border the golf course, where there is a high concentration. And I guess I would say that I find, thank you very much for the presentation. There's a lot of information I wasn't aware of. But collectively, it tells me that, that the coyotes are forcing people inside their houses, and that they can't act in normal ways. I think you have a crisis in Hingham. I think to say that social media is something you don't look at is at your own risk. I think it's a liability for the town. I mean, the fact that a young girl was attacked in Hingham, and had to go to Children's Hospital, and, and small animals, the coyotes are thinking that these small children are small animals. So I do urge the town to take a more aggressive action, particularly around the hotspots. I know there's dens on the golf course. I would think that you need to post people there. I have a, you know, a social media message about somebody walking their dogs, and three coyotes approached them. I, I know that where I live, Monpetuck and Norwell goes through there, the state is allowing hunting of those coyotes. hunting of those coyotes. I understand the restrictions here, but I think you really need to urgently approach the state and ask for remedies for this because I think your children are in danger in Hingham. My grandchildren are in danger in Hingham and that's why I'm here tonight after I was at my town meeting in Norwell last night. But I'm concerned for the children in Hingham and I understand the rules and so on, but when I've interfaced with the state officials on these types of matters, they say if the animal is approaching you, and that is what's happening all over Hingham now, if the animals are approaching humans and they're dangerous, that's when you have the right to act. It does sound like it's complicated, chief, that you can't hunt them and that you apparently have difficulty trapping them, but there has to be a way that you can manage them. And I understand that there's no official response on the weekends and there were multiple sightings of coyotes in that, on those streets, Golf View and Sherwood, over the weekend. And the residents didn't have any relief. They were told that animal control doesn't work on the weekends. So I think that the town needs to, needs to open its eyes and look at social media. I don't think you can say, we don't, we need an official, you have to know what your residents are saying out there. And I would beseech you to take more aggressive action, to contact the state, to come up with a plan. I do not see, I have not seen a single coyote in Norwell this year. So there is some method of controlling them. I think for some reason they're overpopulating in Hingham right now and I don't have an explanation for that. So I'm asking the town to be more aggressive because I hear you kind of giving the standard, it's not, it's a crisis situation right now in Hingham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There was no hunting in Wompa Tuck, by the way, so you know.
Hi, so I'm Eileen Martin from 4 Franklin Rogers Road, that's Conservatory Park. Very, very active coyote population in our neighborhood. And what we have resorted to, because the limited abilities that Leslie is capable of doing, because A, she's only one person and she can't trap, she can't shoot, she can't whatever, we just send out urgent emails to each other and just say where the coyote was, broad daylight. This past weekend, I was with my eight-pound yorkie on my front lawn where there's no fecal matter, there's no whatever, whatever on that entire list. She was on her harness and a six-foot leash standing next to me on my front lawn, broad daylight, and a coyote approached us. And when I went down to scoop her, the coyote darted at me and when I picked her up and I screamed, another coyote came out. And by now, my husband heard me screaming because I don't scream very often, and he opened the front door and he and my daughter ran out and scared them away. So to your point, I think this is, it's completely out of control. It really is completely out of control. We're overdeveloping Hingham, by the way, so we are messing with their habitat. But the fact that we have to alter our lives for coyotes is ludicrous. A five-year-old girl gets her head practically bit off, that's not a crisis or urgent enough to do more than what we're doing now. I beg to differ. Not an attorney, I'm just somebody who doesn't want to be scared to death of my front lawn, so I can't use my lawn. I can't go freely. I had to take care of my neighbor's puppy today. I went out with a Louisville slugger. So we're going to start taking matters into our own hands and I don't think the police department wants that. And thank you all for your service.
One is, well, look at it.
Good evening. George K., 14 Golf View Drive in Hingham. I've been in Hingham for 40 years now and I've lived at Golf View Drive all that time. For the first 25 years or so, we never had any issues with coyotes. I had a dog, we walked her all the time on the golf course. I'd say in the last six or seven years, the coyotes have become very aggressive. I've been approached, actually attacked, three times with my dog on the golf course in the last 12 months. One time, the coyote followed us for about a quarter mile, all the way up the 16th fairway, had my dog on a leash, and it was about 10, 15 feet behind me, snarling. I always go out with the three irons, the only thing it's good for, but, you know, kept the coyote at bay until one of the fellows on a tractor chased it off. The difference is that the coyotes are becoming much more aggressive. They're not afraid of people anymore. And, you know, on that social media event, it happened at Golf View Drive. A coyote came in the afternoon and ran up into the neighborhood. In my neighborhood, you know, I don't have any young children, but there are a lot of young children in the neighborhood. I would say there were at least a half a dozen between two and six years old playing. Coyote runs right up through that area where the kids were. And, I mean, you don't know. I mean, it was, it happens in a flash. I saw the coyote in the backyard coming up right into the neighborhood. One of my neighbors chased it with a lacrosse stick, but we just happened to be there. And if we weren't and the little kids were there, I mean, this two-year-old kid could easily be hurt or maimed by a coyote. I do think we need to do something. I don't think, you know, there's no, you know, I'm not concerned about raccoons, there's no compost piles in our neighborhood, there's no chickens. These coyotes are aggressive and they hunt in the morning and they hunt in the early evening or in the evening, but they also are being seen in the afternoon.
All day, yep.
And, you know, the one time I was coming up the third fairway, the coyote actually came out and engaged my dog, you know, and didn't see me because I was about 10 or 15 feet in front of the dog. And when it did, it was, it ran off. But we never saw that before and it's happening now. And I know that between the area and on the golf course, there are definitely a den in there somewhere. Over in Conservatory Park, there's a lot of open space back there. I know there's plenty of coyotes in there. And I just think that it's going to be a matter of time before something more serious happens.
Yep, yep.
And it's, and this happened on a Sunday, so I'm sure you weren't available on Sunday. But...
But the police department can be called on a Sunday.
I know, but it happened so fast. I mean, the coyote comes and goes, attack can happen in a few minutes and it's gone.
I would, I would just say, you know, and I appreciate it, for us to take, for us to do something else, we, it's, you know, we need everybody's help in this so that if we can go to the state and say, we've gotten 1,000 calls in the last month about coyotes, I think, excuse me, I have the floor.
Chief, it's my understanding that the hunting season is like the first Saturday after Columbus Day until March 8th for coyotes. Is that correct?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you can hunt with a bow, can't you?
In certain areas.
Yeah. I mean, I think that the population seems to be saying...
But there is regulations on what you can hunt with for a coyote.
Yeah.
I don't, I believe it's...
And I can tell you that we keep it very restricted on a conservation property and we get complaints all the time. If I showed up on the golf course hunting, people would not be happy.
Well, and what I learned when I asked about this, because I, I've got the same issue you do on Golf View Drive. I'm on Berkeley Circle, so I've got that same issue. And I'm the crazy woman out with her pots and pans because I'm trying to scare them away and they just turn around and look at me like you're the crazy lady with the pot and pan, you're not coming after me. And so what, I actually called DCR and Mass Wildlife to talk about this probably five years ago. And one of the things I understood was because they're an opportunistic species, their population will grow to inhabit the area that they have. And so, so what DCR and Mass Wildlife said was, well, yeah, you can kill them off, but what ends up happening is the next litter is going to be bigger to then be able to accommodate this larger space. So it was kind of the chief's earlier point. I don't disagree that we need to, we need to deal with the population, but what I understood from Mass Wildlife is it's a temporary fix because the species itself will then react to that and produce more coyotes in that sort of next round. So it's, it's your point that it's cyclical. But, you know, I guess I'd say a couple of things. For us to be able to go to the state and try to get more resources, for instance, to be able to deal with this, we really need to be able to record the data. And I, I get that it's frustrating to call, but if we can kind of set up both a line with you, Leslie, and with the police where if you've had an encounter, even though the encounter's over, if we can begin to track that data, then we've got some ammunition to go to the state. Because I think, I think we're not unlike other communities in the Commonwealth in this suburbanity area, not counting sort of Western Massachusetts where they probably have greater room to stay away from us. And so in order to get anybody's attention, we're going to need to, we're going to need to demonstrate that we've got an issue. We can't demonstrate an issue if we don't have the facts.
Is it my understanding or am I correct, you have the authority to put down a coyote, don't you?
I only have the authority if it is sick or injured. I cannot just a healthy coyote that's running along, I have not. But the other part of that, that people have to understand is if I see a coyote that's running through a neighborhood and I've got houses behind it, I'm not shooting.
No, I understand that.
I can't. I'm not taking that risk.
I just think that people here, not everybody calls, but you do have a problem. And I don't know that the state's going to solve it, I think we have to solve it.
Well, and I think it's not going to be one thing. I don't think this is going to be one thing that's going to solve it. So I think there are a number of pieces to it and...
Hang on, sir. One question I guess I had, Leslie, is if we have some sense of known den activity, is there a way, sort of to the chief's goosepoint, is there a way to do some den disruption? Like, do communities undertake that at all?
I can ask the state if they will allow that. That's again, something else to ask them if they would be willing to allow that and disrupt it.
Because, well, okay, so I didn't realize the dens are, not only the coyotes...
I think that's the thing, if we can start identifying some of these areas and we know where they are denning. I have a bird's nest that grows on my gutter and my thing all the time and I try to go move it and my mother says I can't touch it because she doesn't want to bother the birds. And I'm there like it's ruining our downside of, you know, and every time the porch gets white stuff all over it all the time. And you have to duck from the leaves are falling off. But like, I don't want it there, so, I mean, if I can prevent that, you know, if we can prevent and, you know, go and find out where these dens may be in the golf course and then don't let them find out what it is, cut out the brush, cut out something because they den where there's cover, where they're protected. So if we can remove the protection, then they're not going to den there. They're just going to move somewhere else.
Yeah, and I mean, to Mary's point, I mean, maybe it's a, maybe it's a little bit of a conversation after, after tonight, gather this date, you know, gather this information and sort of sit and think about what are the things we can do. And I think to your point, I don't think it's any one activity. I think it's, it's going to be a series of approaches to...
Yeah. And I think, you know, regarding, you know, if we can educate the officers as well, but if we do get the calls, then, then we can also do, if the officers can't do it, but maybe Leslie can come down and say, hey, we're getting a lot of sightings, let's go down and see if we can...
Right, right. So if you've got a cluster, it's sort of like the GIS function, right? If you get a cluster of calls in a particular area, then you've got to have a den within reasonable distance. Joe, did you...
Well, I think it's five miles.
It's either you have a den or you have a food source that, or multiple food sources. That is, it's the two reasons that you're going to have a lot of sightings in a central area.
Joe, did you have something?
Yeah, just to follow up. Suppose we locate a den, what's the next step? What can be done?
That's what I, I have to talk to the state about. I have to get permission to go in and to, if I'm going to disrupt it. Because at that point, if we find the den, the problem is, is if I just go in and see the den, then all I'm doing is disrupting it and I'm sending them on their way. It's not like they're going to pack up and say, hey, I'm going to head off to another town. They may move on, you know, a mile down the way and set up shop again.
Right.
So that's why I have to find out from the state, if we start doing a thing where we're disrupting dens, are we also going to be putting them down? Because we cannot relocate them.
Is there a model that works in other communities? Because we're not the only community that has the issue.
That's something that we're going to have to start researching more.
I have been talking with other ACOs, that's why I brought in the ones that are abutting our town to the presentation. I'm actually doing more than they are and I'm not tooting my own horn, but they're reaching out to me with my presentation and the things I'm doing and the getting each neighborhoods together. Situate just did their own presentation on coyotes and she reached out to me and took all the handouts I had and the phone numbers of the people to go and took all that and literally just did her own presentation. So they're all starting the same thing now that this is happening. There is, because we're all the same across the board. We, our hands are tied, there's only certain things we're allowed to do. I'm actually talking with the ACOs, we just had training the other day, no one's doing what I'm doing. They're even saying like, whoa, you're doing way more than you should be. And I'm like, but we have a problem and I'm not going to sit around and wait for stuff to happen. So I'm trying to make the best proactive approach I can, but I can't do it all by myself. And that's why I'm saying, there are, and yes, as you guys are saying, there's very, there's so many different pieces that need to go into it. And one of the ones that I'm stressing is a huge one is the food sources. I'm not saying you can't go into your yards, I'm not saying you can't have these things, but be aware in having all of those things, that if they're left to their own devices to roam around or they're, they're just left out and an animal can get into it, they're going to remember that. Because the first time they get free, easy food, they're going to remember that and they're going to keep coming back because they said, I got a food source there, I'm going to come back. And even if your yard has nothing in it, you're a cut-through for, you're, that you're becoming the cut-through because they're going to go as quickly and as easy as they can to that food source. Because it's so much easier going to those free food sources than it is to have to go out into the woods that's left to have to hunt these things. I mean, we can all as humans say, there's been times where we've been super busy, working all day, doing whatever it is we do all day, and we get home and we're like, what would be easier, starting to make a huge dinner or going grabbing fast food?
Sir?
So, thank you all. I just, I'm a resident, I'm at 5 Golf View Drive.
And your name, sir?
Mark Trider, 5 Golf View. I'm a neighbor of George's and of Lauren's. I actually did call the police Sunday afternoon because there was a very aggressive coyote in the neighborhood. And what, I sat there as I, I'll just, for a minute, I protected my two-year-old, you know, and it was a position I wasn't comfortable being in. Furthermore, I was not comfortable seeing one of my neighbors run around with a stick trying to defend our turf. So, and I, and I understand and I really recognize that you guys are doing everything, it sounds like everything you can. But I just would offer some suggestions and maybe some encouragement to approach this in a different way. And I'm not a great public speaker, so pardon me for just a moment. But it doesn't seem logical to me that an overpopulated animal presence, by taking away their food source, only makes them more apt to go find a more dangerous food source. And what I would encourage is maybe that we publish or pursue a more in-depth wildlife study on how these things behave and whether or not removing a food source of a desperate, scavenging animal is going to equate to more safety for my two-year-old in my neighborhood. Because I just don't think that that's a really rational way to approach it. And if that means going to a den and doing whatever you have to do to the den is going to be a more safe measure for our residents, I think that that's something that we should consider more seriously. And, you know, I don't know if that requires a bond, you know, whatever budget needs to be taken to go do that, I would encourage us to consider that very strongly. And another thing that, you know, was funny is that when I mentioned to some other residents on the ferry that I was coming here tonight, it only then became apparent to me that there was an attack on a little girl somewhere else. And it made me feel a little bit uninformed, unprotected, unsecure as a resident, that I wasn't really fully aware of that occurrence. So another thing to really better approach this and encourage you guys to think about this a bit differently, publish the results of the calls. Like, I don't know whether or not my call that I made on Sunday will make it to the paper or to the news or to the other residents in this room, but I had no idea that a little girl had been bitten. If I had known that, like, it took me by surprise, I might have prepared for this meeting a little differently. There might be more people in this room talking about this differently. So I'm not here to criticize what you guys are doing. I understand that there's laws that limit us from taking matters into our own hands and everything else, but I just think that better information and more, more acute attack on what we're trying to understand with this problem, aside from just removing dog dew or bird feed or whatever, like, I actually, I would rather they ate bird feed than come and run after George on the course and he has to use a three iron to beat him.
It's unnecessary the bird food they eat, it's the animals that the bird food...
Well, whatever, whatever it might be. But I just, I just, I'm not a wildlife expert. I know you guys are very, very seriously considering everything that happens as it relates to the wildlife in the town. I look at turkeys as being a problem. I think we should just start looking at this from a really serious wildlife study...
That's a great idea, sure.
Perspective, as opposed to just sitting here trying to take away one-offs that are probably going to make them more aggressive in the long run. But I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And it may be, you know, maybe we come up, I know that you have your Facebook account, I mean, maybe it's a coyote awareness, you know, posting, like, you know, it's sort of like on a townwide basis, what you're encouraging the neighbors to do or what the woman from Franklin... the woman from Franklin Rogers Way was saying, and we do it in, I do it in my neighborhood. When I see a coyote, particularly when I see a coyote during the day, when you're not necessarily anticipating it, I have a little email group that I'll email, I'll email out so that people know, you know, it's the, it's that one day you let your dog out and you're not, you're thinking, oh, it's just going to be for a minute, and, you know, something happens. And if you're aware, to your point, then you're going to be more vigilant. So maybe there's a, maybe there's an awareness, there's the education component of the campaign, and maybe there's just the coyote activity awareness, but that comes back to, if we're going to be the source of that information, if you don't call us, we can't do it.
May I just ask Chief and Leslie, and Chief, I, I don't know what sort of privacy laws there are around calls, but in the last six months, how many police calls have we had about someone being injured by a coyote? Do we?
We haven't had any police calls that I'm aware of.
I know I saw one, I saw one on social media that I alerted the chief, and the police department was never notified about it. And again, we all got to work together on this. There are a lot of different pieces of it, and the police department did a good job at tracking down the information, but it was very much after the fact.
And I was, I was at a location tracking that information down through social media posts. The first time I got time off and I'm tracking down to get that information. So I do take it very, very serious, this situation. I had to track down to get that information. So that's why it's so important not to go to social media, but to call us, so we can try and address it. Even if it's the day after, you can handle your situation how you want to, even if it's the day after, but we need to know, because we can't put out something that's informative to you if we're hearing it on social media, because it isn't appropriate for myself to, to report official information by a social media post that may or may not be the truth. I need to hear it from those people that were involved in it, so I can get 100% what happened, go out, talk to you, see the area, figure out what's going on. So it's important to stress to people, especially, because you can be my eyes and ears too, because I can't always be on social media because I'm out on the road, or I'm in my office fielding calls. It's important, if you see that, let someone know, say, hey, you know what, it sounds like you have something serious, you need to call and, and either have an officer come out, Leslie come out, environmental police come out, someone, so it can be officially reported, so that way we can do something.
The social media is fine, right? I mean, the social media is part of how we stay in tune with what's going on, that's fine. But I guess, you know, you're here tonight at the Board of Selectmen meeting, so for us to take action on it, we need, we need you to come to us as well. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Alisa Peterson, I live at 24 Wickham Ave, which is right behind where the tragic accident recently happened. I have a really simple question for you, thank you so much for doing this. I have two small children, and again, my land abuts where this tragic accident happened. My understanding before I ask the question is that we don't know that that was a coyote.
We're not making any comments about this.
Okay. I'm just saying, because it's amazing how word can spread, and I kind of know firsthand that we don't act, nobody actually really knows for certain.
We're not commenting on this.
Okay. I'm not asking for you to, I'm just saying that it's just unfortunate to keep hearing everybody talk about it when nobody knows. Anyways, my question is, what would you teach our children as far as how to respond if they're approached by a coyote?
That's a great question, and part of going out and talking to either a family individually or as a neighborhood group, and we just did this with the last neighborhood that I got together with. We had the parents, we all talked, the parents and myself all talked first, then we had kids come in, and we chatted with them, and the kids all had great questions, and we talked in a way that they would be able to understand and not feel frightened. I mean, kids today go through enough. They have to deal with having all kinds of training at school to deal with all the stuff that goes on there. It's horrible to have to talk about. The last thing you want is in your own yard, your own neighborhood, to feel scared. So we, I tried my best to talk the best way I can with the parents there to also discuss it. One of the, the big things that we try and get across is, it's important, it's always important to be aware of your surroundings, and, and just, you know, whether you're bike riding, or you're scootering, you're on your skateboard, you have your music on, you, I can be guilty of going for a run, riding my bike, you get lost in the moment and you're so focused, but even if it's not wildlife, it's always good to be, be aware of your surroundings and taking that extra moment to, to look around, to see where you are, what you're up to, and even if it's not, okay, nothing's wrong, but all right, I'm down by so-and-so's house. I know if a stranger comes up, or I see a coyote, I know my family knows them really well, and we all communicated that I can run to their door and knock on the door and go in and say, hey, I just saw a coyote, can you call my mom and dad? That's something, because kids get nervous, and that was one of the things they said, well, what do I do if I'm staying there and I want to run home? Well, are you really close to your, your neighbor that, on the street? And all the parents are like, yes, we're all super close, our kids all play together, they're right in the central area, and that was something that we all came up with, is the, the saying, you know, that you're able to, if you're able to get to that safe place and let that parent know, they can go out and see what's going on, they can call the parents, or they can get them home, call us, so we can respond and scare that coyote out of there, or whatever the situation may be. It's, because one of the, the main things for the kids was, how do we get out of the area? Because we don't want to run by it. And that, as long as you, the child and the family have that close connection with those neighbors, that was the best consensus that we came up. Plus, use what you have with you. If you have a bike, use that as your boundary. Hold it, scream on the top of your lungs if you feel that animal's coming at you, and use that as your barrier between you and that animal. You know, if there's a situation, you know, use your skateboard. You can pick that up and you can swing it around if you have to while you're screaming. Those are all things as well that you yourself can do, especially for older kids. And I would say younger kids, most importantly, always, because it's not just wild animals, it, it's always important to keep an eye on where they are and what they're doing, especially in this day and age.
Sorry, thank you. There's been a lot of chatter around air horns, it seems like that could get really out of control to me. What are your thoughts on that, as far as?
They can, they definitely can work. I would probably give them to kids that are age-appropriate to understand that it's not a toy and it's a serious thing, that if they feel that.
For adults, too. Just around your home.
That's, yeah. I mean, if you're, if you're really seeing a coyote and, and you feel that you can't get it with whatever you're doing, whether you're running out there with a broomstick, a bat, whatever, scaring it off, then you need to be able to use that air horn, use it. But obviously, you don't want to be just using it because you're using it, or giving it to kids that think it's a funny toy, because you're going to create a situation where it's that like crying wolf, and then people are going to start to, oh, it's the kids playing with, or the, the adults just trying to be funny, and they're going to stop paying attention. Because some of the things I, I'm hearing is, I used the other day, and it was so cool, my neighbors all came out seeing what was going on. And it was nice to know my neighbors care, because I didn't realize, you know. So it's like, what you may not think is a little thing, you might be getting someone's attention, but also realize you don't want to overdo it either in the sense of just playing with it, and that's something to stress to kids too, that it, you know, it's not a toy, it's for a serious situation if you're having one. Because you, you will get people's attention without a doubt.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to follow up with the question about educating the children. Do we do any presentation in schools?
No, that would be a good idea, maybe to start speaking to some of the, you know, elementary kids and introduce that into it.
Bill Reardon, Einstein Boat Lane. Leslie, a much more mundane question, but a real shocker for me was compost heaps. We've been organic gardeners for 40 years, and I'm guilty, I think we have four or five, we rotate them year by year. It's all, you know, leaves and garden waste. You mentioned compost heaps with eggs or fish bones, or we never.
Anything that has food, yep.
But e- even garden waste and, and leaves are, are, in your mind, a problem?
Not, not the leaves, no.
Not the leaves or garden waste, if it's just simply like roots from just regular plants or anything, that's completely fine.
That's not an issue.
Not an issue.
People will burn salads and stuff like that. Many people feed carrots to their dogs. They have veg, you know, they, dogs and animals like veg.
That's a different issue, but I just want to, I think, because there are a lot of.
Like, I went to one the other day, and there was almost whole carrots, there was potatoes, oranges, there was bones, there was a whole mix of things, which, I'm not against composting, and I applaud you for doing it for as long as you have, that's great. It's a wonderful thing to have. But we have to be aware, now that we're having such a presence and we're in such a situation with these coyotes and other wildlife, we need to be aware that this is a source of where they can get their food.
I get it. And just good to clarify the difference between, because I think a lot of gardeners are into our style, you know, composting, and not, you know, not introducing food, food sources. So, thank you.
Ma'am? Sorry, she's, I'm going to recognize her first. Okay.
Hi, I'm Lauren Gargan from 11 Golf View Drive. And I think that, I mean, you've heard echoes from our neighborhood as to what we've been seeing. I actually went to South Shore Country Club with my two kids. I work full-time, I was home alone, my nanny was off on vacation, brought my kids to South Shore Country Club to speak with them about, is there anything we can do about the dens? They said the same exact thing, we have to call the state. I totally understand, we need to get the state involved here, but we really need to get the state involved here. I have a three-year-old, a 21-month-old, and a baby coming in 10 days. I can't tell them, Connor, hold your bike up to the coyote. When that coyote ran through our neighborhood, my husband was outside, we're nev, we never let our kids outside alone. I own an air horn, I own a megaphone. My son is scared, like, our children are scared to go outside now. And it's disheartening that, as Hingham residents, we pay a premium for these homes to live in this town, to have these communities, our cul-de-sac is amazing, like, kids can, kids are playing together all the time. Now, you know, Monday, kids were running around with whistles on, blowing them, being like, coyote, coyote, that, that's awful, you know? And I have a, I have a dog as well, that's another concern, but I think that, it just, it really bothers me, and I've been very, very active on social media, you can see me, Lauren Gargan, I'm on Hingham Pinboard, Discussion Board. The thing that frustrates me is, I posted to ask before last town meeting, when I heard about this whole incident that no one knows if it's a coyote, is it not? I don't care what it was, a little girl got attacked, I don't care what it was. And I posted on Hingham Pinboard, trying to find a way, it's 2019, people, I was trying to find a way to email to say, how do I flag an issue at a town hall, at town hall meeting, other than this water issue? Great, the water company. But this is a more serious concern, it's the safety of your residents. And when I posted that, it got deleted by the administration. I never got an answer, I didn't, didn't get any answer of like, an email I could send to. To this day, I still, I don't know how to email, I don't know how to get in touch with you guys.
So, so if you, if you go on the town website, the town of Hingham website, we all have email addresses that are there, the Board of Selectmen's office has an email address that's there.
And you just send, and you can send any complaint.
You can send anything, it gets circulated to all of us.
And so, and I think, I think that part of the issue is, is the divide here, of like a generational divide, of there's so much activity. Like, I posted tonight's meeting on Discussion Board, Pinboard, just so people knew what was going on. I had no idea what was going on.
Thank you.
My mother, as a grandmother of, what, three, almost four grandchildren roaming around these neighborhoods with, with a coyote problem, called Town Council proactively Monday to say, like, this is an issue, and then she found out about this meeting out of, you know, so we need to do a better job, to Mark's point, we need to do a better job of creating awareness of these discussions, of how to report it, of exactly how to report it, like, who do we email when? And to be honest, it's a bit disheartening to say, call the police, when we called the police and there was no action. And the response is always, well, we can't do anything unless there's an incident. Guess what? If one of my children get attacked, believe you me, there will be a big issue with this town. And anybody would say that. And so there has to be, you, you're, no one's going to be calling the police if the answer is always, well, there's no incident. What I would love to know is, what are the count of calls of sightings of coyotes? Do we have that off the top of our head?
Well, I don't have, I'm not the resource, I mean, I have a computer system to go look at that, but the problem is, most of these people are not calling. We hear it in this room.
We called.
Time and time and time again, no one calls the police.
Yeah, but we called.
Every time, every time, it needs to go through our system, it needs to be dispatched. And that's the only way we can collect the data. It goes in there that a coyote was sighted. I can't have officers chasing coyotes through the woods.
That's a contradiction.
No, are they going to spend all, you, someone sees a coyote, in all reality, are they going to just spend their entire day chasing after one coyote that ran through a yard? I mean, what is it that you would expect us to do? This is what I'm not quite sure.
Oh, well, maybe at least have the data. You guys are talking about data, data, data.
I'm not getting the data.
Okay, 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 okay. I think we need to take this down, let's take it down a notch. So let me, let me just, let me just say what I've sort of taken as some to-dos, and, you know, what I guess I'd suggest is that we come up with a little bit of a timeline to report back out to folks about some of the items on this list. So, you know, I wrote down the wildlife study because I think that that's perhaps a longer-term issue, but you're absolutely right, it's not just coyotes, it's all manner of wildlife now that, you know, particularly with increased development, even in the last two years, right? I like the idea of publishing the results of coyote activity. So if people are calling, we have some, some way of, you know, a combination of social media and the Hingham Journal, and maybe H-Cam to sort of run a clip of, here's where we're seeing them, folks. So if you live near the country club, if you live near Wickham Drive, you know, those are areas that we have seen increased activity, in Black Rock Country Club, for instance, right? Den disruption, I think we should, we should follow up on what that means, what procedures we need to follow, do we need the environmental police involved, what, you know, what happens? Like, you know, to your point, Leslie, are we just moving the den, then the den issue to another neighborhood? Does it take them some time to regroup? So is it worthwhile to pursue conversations with the state? So I think that we can elevate this through our state delegation, we can also elevate this with the appropriate regulatory agencies, but I think it does help us to begin to gather data in a more systematic way. And so to that end, you know, along with this sort of publishing the coyote activity results, that, that create, would create a database that would, could be accessible, you know, so that you're, you're coding those calls differently, so we could pull those out to be able to demonstrate coyote activity. You know, I do think, again, this is to Mary's point, I think there's a, this is a multifaceted issue. I think the, the bylaws and set of community expectations around what are the known, what are the known attractions to, to wildlife and coyotes in particular, that would draw them into our, our neighborhoods? And I do think the school presentation idea is a, is a, a good one, and, you know, maybe it's something we can get, get put together before the end of the school year, well, probably not this year, but in any event, I, we've been taking notes, we hear you, we, we are living this too. So, you know, I, I think this, for me, has been a very helpful discussion, because I think that it, it, I think it's elevated the issue, I think you've all come up with some great ideas, and, you know, that's what this is about, right? We have this discussion, and then we're the policymakers, and so we go off and try to help address the issue, you know, through, through policy and through enforcement activities, so.
And I would just say that, you know, I, we're not, we don't have anything to do with Hingham Pinboard, Hingham Discussion Board, but we read your post asking about town meeting, and it was put on the agenda tonight because we read that post, and we saw that there are people who are concerned about this.
That's great, yeah, I think that's great.
And that's why we're doing this, and I, you know, I hear you that, I hear you that not everybody gets their information from different places, we post our agendas, we have a town web, we have a town Facebook page that lists things, so I, I take your point that, you know, making people aware of our meetings and what's on our agenda and how to get in touch with us, you know, that's, that's something we work with on a continuous basis, but we put this on the agenda because we heard it, and we thought that this would be a better place to have the conversation. It's hard to have that on social media.
Yeah.
So, we want to hear the issues, we want to hear the stories, we want to hear the ideas, because that's gonna help us try to, try to address, address this problem.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, the social media isn't a valid posting place, but I think it's great to keep a pulse on what the public is saying there, because, like, don't ignore that, because there are a lot of angry people, there were, I was added to like, side groups of killing coyote group, like, there's a lot of action happening in Hingham with this, so I would just keep a pulse on it, because people are very concerned and very upset by it, so.
Thank you. Hang on, hang on, Mark, one second. Mark, one more minute, I think she won't, she's been wanting to speak, sorry.
Hi, I'm Adrian Gerlach, I live at 34 Bickerhill Drive, which is right off of Fattler Road, near the shipyard, so I'm just gonna echo what other people are saying, but wanted to let you know about the activity in our neighborhood. So, we frequently see coyotes, I have a five-year-old and an eight-year-old, my eight-year-old is afraid to walk two houses down, because he regularly sees them, there was one in our yard just the other day, on Saturday, our neighbor across the street has a small dog, and three coyotes attacked it, it was bit. The, our neighbors went out with their daughter, they were screaming, doing pots and pans, the whole thing, and the coyotes just stood there and looked at them. So, I just wanted to share that with you, and then I also wanted to ask a question, clarifying question around, what number are we supposed to call? Is it animal control, is it 911? And then what is the expectation? Is it that if we have a sighting, we're calling, and you're coming out? Or only if something has happened, like, somebody's been bitten, are we calling and you're coming out? What, what is it? How does that work?
Well, it sounds like I'll be writing a new policy when I leave this room. We will respond, we'll, we'll try to do our best. We can spend some time, make sure everything's safe, but I think the important, in order for us to get the state, you know, to reach out to the state, the first thing they're gonna ask as far as data, and I can't say, well, I heard a bunch on social media, I need to have that we called and we responded.
Mm-hmm.
So, if, the only, the best way to get ahold of a police officer is 911.
Okay.
Call 911, the dispatch will take it, it goes into the computer system, but it will be counted. I'll start educating my officers that when they get a coyote call, this is what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay. And then, for you, Leslie, as well, is there, so I know you talked a little bit about some things.
Well, she, if she's needed, we would contact her through 911.
Okay.
911 connects you to fire, police, ACO, Hubber Master, anybody that's needed at that point. So, that's the catch-all, 911 for everything now.
So, if I'm on duty, I'm able to respond. If I'm not on duty, they will determine at that time if I'm needed or not. So, that's why, if they say, unfortunately, that I'm, dude, I can't speak for what's being said by dispatch over the phone, so it's not me saying that I don't want to help, it's, I'm not here, here, I'm not hearing the phone call, I'm not being told about it, so I don't know, it's them and the officers that respond if I'm off duty, and they're the ones making that judgment, saying, do we need to have her come out and handle it, or is this something that doesn't need her attention at this time?
Mm-hmm.
And that's how they handle it, and they will, they determine it, and then if they say, yes, she needs to come out, then they call me and say, we need you to come in.
Right. And, and when would a situation escalate to the level of a state? So, if an animal was bitten, for example, would you, would you talk to the state about that, or is?
I normally let the state know anything that comes in that I think is serious, like, basically, I've been talking to them regularly, I have one of their numbers through text message, and, I mean, I'm calling and texting, I think he's getting annoyed with me, but it's like, I'm literally letting him know, like, this is what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm trying every way I can, but, again, the state is the state, so.
I mean, there are some regulations that, if a dog, if someone has a dog bite, the hospitals and the doctor's offices are supposed to be notifying the towns, but I think, if it go, if it's, if they go to Weymouth, Weymouth ends up getting notified.
No, it, they, they send it to where the bit, the biting dog lives.
Okay.
So, my neighbor did call and report this, I think, I believe she called you or your, your office, so. But my, then my other question was just around, you started saying some things people can do to protect themselves as a coyote approaches, is there anything else, or any other, like, they're out more often at dusk, or any other sort of information you can share? So, I think, you know, asking a child to hold up their bike, if they're a little one, that's probably not gonna work, is there anything else?
Well, I wasn't really saying a little one, I, I'm talking about the older ones, if they're, they're looking for something, you know, that's.
I consider five to be pretty little, and my daughter has a bike, I don't, she probably wouldn't do that.
I understand that, and I'm talking about the older ones, not, not the little ones. And again, with the little ones, there should be some supervision and keeping an eye on where they are, because in that situation, to me, it's not only worrying about wildlife, you're worrying about other situations that could happen, especially at a, at a young age. I'm not saying you have to be right on top of them, but keeping an eye on where they are and what's going on. And again, it's that if they're, they're out there, and it doesn't matter, you know, the age, if they understand to get to a safe place, especially being young, knowing where their parents are, because I wouldn't think a five-year-old would, would understand, I think that they would be too scared, honestly, if they're confronted with an animal or stranger, their, their reaction is, they're gonna be scared, and they're not gonna be thinking of all the things that myself or you would be thinking, okay, I can do this, their immediate thought is, I need to get to my mom or dad.
Right.
So, that's why, again, I, I'm always on the, keep an eye on them, because the younger crew is most likely, that younger group is gonna want to go, their reaction when they're scared is going to the parents.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why the supervision, I'm always saying.
It's hard though, right? Because like, this stuff is happening right in your yard, like, and in your driveway. So, it's, you know, you're in your house, you're looking out the window periodically to see the kids doing their sidewalk chalk in the driveway, and then, next thing you know, there's a coyote coming down the street. And, you know, the daytime activity is, is definitely increasing.
One of the things the biologist mentioned was the fact that, to make yourself bigger, if, if we look back at natural life, if, there's certain animals that they have these big collars when they're threatened, they go out, or they puff up their chest, or we have a blow, we have a blowfish, it fills itself up or there, and that's what the biologist was talking about, so have the child, like, he could lift his jacket up, and make it like it's bigger, so he presents himself as being bigger to the coyote than what the coyote saw, and he's less likely to bother them if things look bigger.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate you giving your time.
And continue, the, the continuing of harassing them is a huge thing, it's just, anytime you see them. I know with some people, the excitement of seeing one, and I just had someone recently, oh yeah, I followed it around for a while, just to see what it was up to. You shouldn't be following it around, and they got mad, well, why? I wanted to see what, you should be scaring it, not following it around, because to it, it's realizing, that person isn't a threat, it's just following me, it's not doing anything threatening to me, so I don't care. That's part of the habituation process, that they're getting used to us, because, well, that being over there isn't doing anything, and then that person goes off, does whatever they want to do, after taking their videos and whatnot, and then they come across another human, and they're sitting there staring at them, like, whatever, I'm gonna keep doing what I'm gonna do, because the last being that was exactly kind of like you, didn't do anything. And unfortunately, they get used to that. So, that's why it is that, keep scaring them, keep scaring them, whether it's using a garden hose, the air horn, whatever you have, to keep them moving and uncomfortable, is a huge, huge thing that we all need to do.
Thank you, thank you very much for putting this on the agenda.
Sure. Mark? No, sorry, sorry, it's Mark, I'm recognizing Mark Cullings, I'm sorry.
Mark Cullings, 44 Spring Street. Anybody seen a bear yet?
No.
No, okay, yeah, so, that's not why I.
Yeah, Mark, that's not on the agenda.
I would urge, I think there's been a lot of good discussion here, and a lot of good back and forth. Everything has been about Hingham, we're not an island. We got Rockland, we got Weymouth, we got Norwell, we got Cohasset, we got Citroen, we got Marshfield. I'm hopeful that in all of this, the data that you're collecting, you're getting from other towns, or contributing to other towns too, so that when you speak to the state, and I, I'm really tired of hearing about the state, these people, and I, and I think everybody in this room, wants something to happen, and the state is us, and the bigger that we are, that is, the other communities as well, joining with Hingham to help this, may make a little bit of difference, that's.
Thank you.
Just a clarifying question for kids. I read that they shouldn't run from them, because then coyotes chase them, so I'm seriously, like, what do I tell my three-year-old? He said he would like yell at, like, is, because I, the threat, I get, making them feel uncomfortable from an adult standpoint, we have the horns and everything, but if he's, like, we're outside, it approaches in a yard. I heard if they run, they actually chase after the child and attack them, so like, what do they do then?
There's no 100% right answer on this, but my experience when you're encountering wildlife, is that you don't turn your back on them, walk backwards, keep an eye on them, so that you can continue to confront them, and speak to them, and scare them away.
They should like be yelling at them, kind of.
They should be yelling at them, and retreat backwards, don't turn your back, because you want to see what that animal's doing, and how it's responding.
Okay.
And scream bloody murder, because you, that you want your parents to be heard, so they can come out as well.
I think, I actually think we've had a lot of great discussion tonight, if you have something, very quick, but, could you please come to the podium, though?
Yeah, it's very quick, and there's one thing. Sorry, and I apologize to everyone for belaboring the issue, but one suggestion I would make is that kids are out playing almost 100% of the time on the weekend, very infrequently on the weekday. I would urge you guys to consider changing the schedule of your hours, and sorry to get so personal about it, but, you're probably much better from a bedside manner perspective to the town, when something happens. If you were to arrive, we had an officer show up, he said, I'm not the animal control officer, and we all went.
I can adjust that.
Yeah.
Pay or overtime, but I just think it's a much more effective use of your time during this particular crisis, that I've heard, used, if you were to be on-call on the weekend, when kids are most frequently outside, as opposed to on a Monday, when no one's around, and that's all my.
Thank you.
Can I say?
Sure.
Just speaking, we saw a coyote walk down the center of our street.
Identify yourself.
Oh, Carol Meyer from the Hingham Anchor, not the Journal. Since you mentioned the media, I just thought I'd mention, I did hand out a couple of cards, but I'm sure there's some way that we, because we're online, we're 24/7, so, I mean, as much as we can.
Yeah.
So, I think, I can give a couple more cards, though, if people can get in touch with us, and are willing to help, I'm sure we could definitely be helpful in this.
Thank you. Thanks, Carol. Okay, well, so, I, I've taken these to-dos, I've been, I'm gonna huddle up with Tom and Michelle, and we'll collectively, as a board, come up with a plan. As I was gonna say, some of these things are, could be implemented quickly, police procedures and communication techniques, all the way through to, you know, potentially a wildlife study, that, again, I, I think there's been some great discussion and great ideas tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here with us, so, thank you. Okay, now, to the Hingham Farmers Market.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Leslie, thanks, chief, thank you, appreciate it. Hey, Leslie, if you don't, yeah, thank you. Okay, Hingham Farmers Market, Coastal Vineyards and Westport Vineyards, liquor license discussion?
Yes.
Okay, take it away.
I, I wasn't prepared to make a.
And you didn't bring any wine samples, so that's 0 for, we're 0 for 2.
Mark Cullings, 44 Spring Street, representing the Hingham Farmers Market. We opened Saturday, happily, on the, at the beach, amidst quite a significant construction project. It's going to be an interesting season, as the construction project of the, the new multipurpose bathhouse is erected, but we've been working very closely with the trustees and, and the DPW about it, and, and it's been, it's been gratifying to have the support of, of all of the departments in the town, to be able to be at the beach and get the, the market going on schedule, as we've done, this is, I guess, the, the 48th year of the Hingham Farmers Market, and, not, not always at the beach, but, in any event, a year, we've had wine sales from Massachusetts Farm Wineries now for several years. Last year, we also received permission from the board to allow tasting, under the, the Department of Agricultural Resources, MDR, rules which are very strict. The trustees of the Bathing Beach have given permission for us to sell, to have tastings there, provided that the Board of Selectmen approves, and that's why.
So, that's why you're before us, okay. And I know that, so, for a sense of history on this, you, you first sold wine for a couple of years.
Yes.
Right, at the farmers market, but really to, to allow the vendors to sort of make their best case to their customers, without being able to taste the wine, it was, hey, chief, you know what, those women forgot their umbrellas, are they still in the hall? Sorry. Thank you. In order to, it really maintain the wine vendors at, at the farmers market, it really, right, and how, what was your experience last year?
It was very good. It is, the, the actual rules permit no more than three ounces of, of wine tasting per, per person. The, the, the actual procedures that these wine farm wineries do is, is, they, they may have a one or a half-ounce cup, and they, there's just a, a tiny bit of wine in it that, that people taste, and they might taste two or three, it's, it's just, it's, wine tasting is, is a common part of the farm, farmers market environment, with farm wineries there, so, and the response was very good, the vendor, we had, last year, Westport wasn't out there last year, and Coastal Vineyards was, and it made a significant difference in, in that vendor's product, and, and that's what we're, we're, we want to encourage that, and help that along.
And I guess, you know, from my perspective, I think we've gone out, gone about this incrementally. We, you first introduced wine sales, you know, I think in, in conjunction with conversations with the chief, and then, once those were successfully managed, we moved to this very modest wine tasting program, again, in consultation with the chief. So, I, I think we've tried to be very careful about both introducing alcohol sales at the farmers market, as well as this kind of very limited tasting opportunity. Mary, do you have anything?
No, I would just, you know, I, I think we're really appreciative for the continued cooperation of, of the police department, and the trustees of the Bathing Beach, and, you know, the friends of the market. It's just a really good partnership, and I think this measured approach, we've, haven't had any incidents, and was, was, one of these, one of these was new, one of these wineries was new last year, Mark, is that right?
No, Westport did not come last year.
Okay, that's what I, okay.
They had intended to, there was an internal situation with the, the wineries, so they opted out, but they're back this year.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Joe, questions?
I had a, a number of questions, and I see they're actually answered by the statute, Section 15F, that deals with the special license. I just want to read a portion of it, because I think it's important that we recognize the restrictions. This is a special license for the sale of wine produced by or for the licensee in sealed containers for off-premise consumption at an indoor/outdoor agricultural event. All sales of wine shall be conducted by an agent, representative, or solicitor of the licensee, to customers who are at least 21 years of age. A licensee under the section may provide without charge samples of wine to prospective customers at an indoor/outdoor agricultural event. All samples shall be served by an agent who has to be at least 21 years of age, and all samples shall be consumed in the presence of the agent, provided that no sample shall exceed one ounce of wine, and no more than five samples served to an individual prospective customer. So, I think there's a lot of restrictions built into the statute, and I think it's appropriate for the town, and you've really done a great job.
Yeah, thank you. And the, the MDR restriction is, is no more than five, but our restriction is no more than three. I'd point that out, and we are an agricultural event. In order to even begin this process, we have, the Hingham Farmers Market has to go through a process of submitting a, a letter to MDR, with the market manager's name and biography, all of the vendors who are coming, and where the, the, the wine farm winery is going to be located, and so, it's, it is, it's, it's a, it's a complicated problem, and, not problem, but complicated process, that has been very successful, and we're glad to be able to offer it to our patrons.
It's always exciting when the farmers market's back. Questions or comments for the public? I'd take a motion if you're ready.
Before we do, any concerns from the chief, are we?
No, I, I don't, it's, it's been a long process, and I have a lot of faith in Mark and how he runs this organization, that, we do have a police officer present, he's dealt with profit, but part of his responsibilities to go, is to go over to the wine tasting, and making sure everything's going well, and they're in a cordoned-off area, sort of separated, and they're watched over by your, by your people, and it's been a successful thing, and I was very leery going into this.
Yep, I remember.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of David Nielsen, DBA Coastal Vineyards, for a Chapter 138, Section 15F special license, for the sale of its wine products at the Hingham, Hingham Farmers Market on Saturdays beginning May 11, 2019, and ending November 23, 2019, as outlined in the notice of approval of license for sale of wine produced by Farmer Winery at a Farmers Market, and supporting documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye.
Thank you all.
Take another, wait, take another motion.
You want to do the other one?
Sure. I move to approve the application of Westport Rivers Vineyard and Winery for a Chap- Chapter 138, Section 15F special license, for the sale of its wine products at the Hingham Farmers Market on Saturdays beginning May 11, 2019, and ending November 23, 2019, as Market on Saturdays beginning May 11, 2019, and ending November 23, 2019, as outlined in the notice of approval, a license for sale of wine produced by Farmer Winery at a farmers market and supporting documents.
Second. All is in favor? Aye. Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Hingham Harbor Walk historical signage.
More harbor activity.
Excellent.
So, I'm Bill Reardon, chairman of, at Steambolt Lane, chairman of the Harbor Development Committee. With me is Bruce Macaloney, who's a member of the Harbor Development Committee and has been the chair of a working group, the Harbor Signage Working Group, which we're here to talk a little bit about and get a permission from you all. Context might be useful here, Joe, particularly for you, because this is, I think, new, and I don't know how much you've seen at ZBA. Mary and Karen have heard a little bit more about this, but this all stems really from the Harbor Master Plan 2007, which always contemplated a harbor walkway, and that's been an objective for the Harbor Development Committee for a very long time. We've begun that process, I'm happy to point to three portions of the walkway that are completed. The first one was the parcel right on the Bathing Beach, just in back of the dune. That was placed as we did the dune and the protective concrete blocks that are underneath the dune. That was in 2016. 2018, we finished the Bathing Beach portion, the grove going from the bathhouse toward the lobster pound, so people coming, particularly from Crow Point, could now have a walkway off of 3A, right along the harbor. And then, as some of you have been down, may have noticed, the third portion, which is the bandstand parcel going from the southern end of the Bathing Beach parking lot and connecting to the boat ramp parking lot, has been completed this spring. That also ties into walkways going back to the new bathhouse and snack shack. The intent is that this keeps going. We have requests and are in the permitting mode for three of the town wharfs to have those rebuilt and raised to address sea level rise and storm surge, but we, as part of that plan, the intention is that the Harbor Walk would continue along those wharfs, pick up at Whitney Wharf, we already have the pedestrian bridge going across to Whitney Wharf, and some portion going into the former mobile station parcel where currently the Vietnam Vet Memorial is about to be relocated, I think your next item on the agenda. So, this is part of the direction. We, as part of that, made a request last year that CPC did not grant to update the 2007 master plan, because it's really pretty outdated. Master plans usually last about 10 years. They had a lot else on their plate, they didn't see fit to move that, but we will apply for it again this year. But in conjunction with that, we did reach out to the Green Bush Trust in the spring of 2018, and they gave us a grant of a little more than $5,000, us being both the Bathing Beach trustees and ourselves jointly, because this signage notion, the walkway had always intended to have so-called interpretive historical signage along the walkway, similar to what you see along the Boston Harbor Walkway. So, we asked for that, they gave us $5,000. We kind of got organized last summer, created this working group that Bruce has nobly chaired and really run with. What they initially did was to sort of think through, what do we want to accomplish, you know, with these signs? What's our objective here? What's the concept? So, the notion was, you know, the history of the inner harbor told in words and pictures that you can look at as you're looking at the harbor and maybe have a sense of what used to be there. That would include signage all the way from lobster pound to Steamboat Wharf, the last one, which is right at the base of Summer Street. The notion, long-term, might be as many as 10 or 15 signs along that route. A target that the group came up with is, the town will be 400 years old in 2035, so maybe by then, we can, with additional funding and work, have signage akin to what Boston Harbor has. Some of the themes that we know are in part of Hingham's history, sailing ships, fishing, the barrel industry, steamboats, industry that used to be down on the wharf, coal, a foundry, all of that, we don't now have any sense of that as you walk the harbor. There's no, you have to go to the Historical Society to get that information, so this is a way of bringing it and presenting it. Bruce went at this with his team that include Eileen McIntyre, who jointly with me and Andrea Young gave a talk to the Hingham Land Trust a year ago, May, with a lot of signage of historical stuff that people just hadn't seen, and people got very excited, and Eileen got excited and did a great job. Also, our assistant.
Carl Thompson and Chris Daly.
Chris Daly is the Bathing Beach trustee representative, just as Bruce is our representative. Carl Thompson has donated his service as a designer and sign maker, and he is an important part of the process. Bruce really started this by going in and researching, what did Boston Harbor do? How did they develop their signage? How did they develop the format? What kind of regulations would be required? Who would pay for those? In some instances, they are paid for by owners of properties along, and that's something we might continue to explore. Materials, standards, you know, what sort of transparency do we want to have, you know, among the community in terms of, you know, getting this notion off the ground? So, they developed those themes, came up with this first cut of three signs, and that was about what our budget would allow, using access, accessing resources at the Historical Society. Jerry Duff and Michael Akili were very helpful in digging out information that related to the first three themes, and then were using Carl Thompson, who's donated his service entirely pro bono to get this design. He went so far as to think about color schemes and went down to the harbor and looked at the palettes that he saw and said, these are the kinds of colors that we want to get in here. Got a quote for the production, the installation. We've started it off. The objective here is to work toward, taken a lot of time at this juncture to get the overall approach straight and right, and then have it be applied consistently over what will be a subsequent request. We do have a second request into the Green Bush Trust to follow on with three more signs. So, we're here before you because Whitney Wharf is a parcel that you control, and we need your authority to have a sign there. The two other signs contemplated in this first round are, one, up on the Bathing Beach, the grove portion, that will relate to shipbuilding, and another one on a Conservation Commission parcel, which is the parcel that the Vietnam Vet Memorial and POW MIA is there. We have been, Bruce, you can report in terms of other commissions that have addressed this issue and how they've reported.
Sure, and to add one more comment, we're going to link this to the Hingham website. So, multiple generations of families have been in Hingham. We're going to put people's names who have been productive at the harbor over time on the signs. So, Andrea Young and the Historic Districts Commission volunteered to keep the site updated so it'd be interactive. So, if you have a picture, if you have a anecdote, if you have something, you can report it to Andrea, she'll be the judge on whether it's historically correct, and then add it to the website over time, not to change the signs. So, we've been through a broad, I'll call it acknowledgement, within the Hingham community, starting with the Historic Society, going to Historic Districts, the Bathing Beach, the Hingham Development, I mean, Harbor Development, and last night going through the Conservation Commission. You get buy-in to put the signs, because the signs are historic signs, about the past and the present of Hingham and where it's going to go to. It doesn't restrict future signs, by the way, to just being historic. These are funded by Green Bush, they are in particular going to be historic signs, and hopefully we'll get six done by September. But the idea is to convey what has happened in the harbor over time since 1635. And we've gotten broad buy-in by all the, what we think are the appropriate commissions and groups within the town to not only approve the signs, the graphics that you have in front of you, the content of the signs, and then the placement of the signs, working with Town Engineering, Roger, and Bills and Thomas, to make sure that the signs are appropriate to go where they're going to be.
Questions from my colleagues?
I would just say, thank you. I think that all the buy-in, Bruce, that you've gotten from all those different boards is not only helpful when it comes here, but as you're looking at placing some of those future sinages, you know, I think that that's just going to help as you continue to move this along, and I would just also, you know, we have a lot of volunteers on committees that help, but it is just, it's so wonderful to see citizens like Ms. McIntyre, Mr. Thompson, who are getting engaged, who are donating their services and their expertise. I just would offer my thanks and appreciation to them as well for what looks to be a wonderful addition to the harbor.
Joe?
Are there plans for lighting for the signs?
No, we didn't plan, aside from the natural light along Whitney, because Whitney is very well lit now, so you can see the signs at night, but up in the grove, I didn't want to, didn't plan to disturb the natural environment of Hingham now by putting in artificial lights.
That's, that was a leading question, because I was actually going to encourage that response, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just want to add that, again, as part of the request for updating the master plan, we, there are components here that we're trying to get consistent and right for the whole harbor front, so that we don't have kind of a hodgepodge. So, the grant request that we submitted, and we had two different firms propose to provide those services, included things like plant materials, lighting, should there be lighting, what height, you know, all of those are part, when you're thinking about doing an overall master plan for the harbor, you would incorporate that, but we obviously have not done that, so at this juncture, this is daylight use, is planned.
And I noticed on the list of boards and commissions you've spoken to, there's not the Building Department or the Zoning Board.
I did not. I didn't know I was supposed to, and I did not.
There are zoning restrictions with respect to signage. I just want to make sure that whatever needs to happen, that you go through that group as well.
So, just go talk to Emily.
Emily, and might that entail going before the ZBA? In terms of getting their...
It, if you, if the signs conform with current restrictions, there's no reason to go before the ZBA. In fact, you're looking for, right, so Emily would be, Emily and the Building Commissioner is what I'd recommend.
Thank you. We've tried to be as inclusive as we could. We didn't think of this, I think of the signage as advertising, you know, on, I know there's rules on lighting and all of that, but I hadn't realized that it might apply to something like this.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. The totality of this project would be absorbed in the grant that both you and the trustees of the Bathing Beach have obtained from the Green Bush Trust?
For the first three, correct.
For the first three, and so there'd be no additional town resources, includes installation of the signs as well?
The intention is to use DPW to do the installation? There is budget money in the grant to pay for that. I've reached out to them to get a meeting to find out. I've approximated $200, it's actually, you're doing two holes, 16 inches in diameter, 24 inches deep.
Okay. And, yeah, so that was my question about installation cost, so that's been built into the specifications?
Yep, in the budget.
Okay. And so, I know that in other cases, we actually approve the content of the sign, like for, like the HMC, we approve the design of the sign, so if we're approving this, are we approving what we see here, or how is that going to work?
That's probably a time question.
That's a curveball for me, but that's something I can absolutely look into. I'll talk to, I'll talk to people around town, probably Mike Lancy will have some input on that.
Okay. So, I, you know, I...
If we have to do that, we'll bring it back.
But are you expressing a preference that you want to approve this, the specific verbiage?
Well, I guess if it's going to be other than what I'm seeing here tonight, then yeah, you know, I think if you're, if you made, if you were going to make material changes to the content or design, I think that's an aesthetic and a content question that we typically approve in the signage that comes before us.
The intent was, and we didn't know about the ZBA potential requirement, that this was the last venue and the last approval, so they, the content, the design, the color is literally ready to go and...
But it's what's been presented here.
It's what's here.
Absolutely, correct. This is based on a final meeting last week, and final things from Carl?
Correct. So, the process would be going forward, we're going to, before we go to put the signs in, it'll take six to eight weeks to get the signs ready to put in, we need to approve and get the final copy back from the manufacturer. Colors change. We were very particular about what colors we want to use on the signs. We want to make sure that the colors that come out of the printer are the colors that they're going to put on the HPL. So, we're going to have one last chance to see what the signs are going to be before we go and turn the key, and hopefully that'll be, if you approve it and we can move forward tomorrow, we get the signs back in about two weeks to, in a paper form, to see if we want to approve it.
But the language is not intended to change?
The language is not intended to change, and we're just hoping that the colors match.
Okay. And the materials have been approved, it looks like, by Historic Districts Commission? And can you, can you talk maybe a little bit about maintenance, like what, in terms of, you know, it sounds like you talked to Boston for the Boston Harbor Walk, you know, were there significant ongoing maintenance costs with this?
So, not really. They, so right now, the signs have 10-year warranties. They're made out of aluminum with the brush, black powder, brush coating at last, and will go to the weather as far as being next to Hingham Harbor. There is no maintenance on these signs whatsoever. You can maybe once a year, at Earth Day, clean them off with a cleaner, and that's about it, because of the birds coming over or something, but there's nothing that we have to do with the signs. Now, anecdotally, what Boston said is they have 10-year warranty, the signs last eight years, and they get a new sign in eight years. But the intention is, these signs should last for the warranty.
Okay, so...
We were very conscious, especially given the experience at the Shipyard, because some of the signage there sadly is, was not as thoroughly researched perhaps as what Bruce has done in going into Boston. We've tried to go with kind of the best available, and including, I'll just give this as an example. You may remember that for the bust of Seaman Foss, we had one of these things where you could put your phone up and plug in. Well, we learned during the process, and we had some conversation earlier tonight about kind of staying current with technology, that, you know, that's not where it's at now, it's better to put the website location and go to a website that's actively managed, and we've got the Historical Commission agreeing to do that. So, that's going to be the vehicle. If you want to get beyond the sign to hear the rest of the story about the Hingham shipbuilding industry, then go to the website.
Okay. I mean, I'm just, you know, I think I'm just mindful that, I agree with you, once you, once you put the signs out there, and particularly your plan to increase signage across the harbor front, you know, we are taking on an obligation to make sure we keep them up.
Yes.
I think we got to be aware of that, too.
And I think if you want the signs ready, at least my hopes, as over time, right now the website says Hingham Harbor, there's going to be Derby Shops, there's going to be other signs. Each one of our signs now has the Hingham seal on it, and I think, I foresee having private signs out there that don't have the Hingham logo on it, and we have a format now, so if people want to do that, they can conform to those signs.
But they've come before all of you, same for us.
Right, right. Any other questions from my colleagues? Any questions, Joe? No? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay.
Do we want to make this vote contingent on the Building Commissioner and the ZBA?
I was going to suggest language on that, and I also just want to make sure, are you comfortable if the motion makes it clear that there's no external lighting or internal illumination of these signs?
There's absolutely none planned or budgeted for, more importantly.
So, the motion I would propose would be to authorize the Harbor Development Committee to seek all necessary permits and install historic signage on parcels under the care and control of the Board of Selectmen, consistent with the application to the Historic District Commission for a certificate of appropriateness dated March 25, 2019, provided that there shall be no external lighting or internal illumination of these signs.
And contingent on?
Well, I said all necessary permits, so if... Well, I said all necessary permits, so if those permits are necessary, they would be included.
Okay, got it. Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the, just to be clear, if we speak with Emily and she concludes-
Nothing.
No permit required, then we're go. If the permit is required, then we have to go through that process.
Right, or it may be that you need something from the Building Commissioner, and that will satisfy-
Okay.
The requirement.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up is the Board of Selectmen acting, will be acting in our capacity as water commissioners. I think the, probably the first step in that is to become the water commissioners.
Yes.
So, you know, I think you learned at town meeting that there would be certain transition actions that we would need to take. So tonight is the, is the organization of the board in its capacity as water commissioners, which was a warrant article approved by town meeting, and I think unless there's discussion on that particular item, I think Joe has a motion to offer for that.
Yes, this was Article 11 at the town meeting. So I would move that the Board of Selectmen organize as the Board of Water Commissioners, and that we elect the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to serve as the Chair of the Board of Water Commissioners.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Karen, I had a couple of things I'd like to-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just on that, but while we're on that agenda topic-
Yep, go ahead.
I didn't want to lose the opportunity. So a couple of weeks ago, I had mentioned that the transition team, the Transition and Evaluation Committee is being formed. We're likely to be interviewing for those positions as soon as possible. So if anybody in the public is interested in being a member or considered for that committee, please get your talent bank applications into my office as soon as possible. That would be very helpful. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that the town is working with Eversource towards a successful transition. In fact, we, I have a copy of a letter from Eversource directly to the Department of Public Utilities that states in part that Aquarian and the town of Hingham have a mutual goal of achieving a smooth and efficient transition. I just want to underscore that so that the public hears that, not just from our side, but also from Aquarian. This is what the DEP is looking for, what we're looking for, what they're looking for. So there is excellent communication and cooperation moving forward. And the last thing I wanted to let everyone know is that we are working cooperatively, again, with Aquarian and Eversource, and in fact, we'll be hoping to meet with the DEP Commissioner towards the end of May. So, you know, these are important things that we have to do, and we're doing them.
Great. Any, any further comments on that, that item?
I think we're just, you know, I think we're, as this moves along, this will be an agenda item on a lot of our meetings, and that as we continue to, you know, move through transition activities, we'll continue to update, update all interested parties.
Yeah, and so, you know, frankly, these meetings started the morning after town meeting with Mary Power representing the Board of Selectmen and Tom and Michelle representing the Board of Selectmen's Office in conversations with both Aquarian leadership and Eversource leadership, and those conversations continue, I think, to be productive and ongoing. So, you know, I think maybe some of the hoopla has died down, but the work really begins, and it began the morning after town meeting, just as we had said it would and just as we anticipated it would. So we are committed to bringing the right expertise and talent to the table. We're committed to involving the citizen voice in the Transition Evaluation Committee. You know, it's a really exciting project for the town, really exciting, and I think with our regulatory partners at DEP who are supportive of our efforts, and with the cooperation of the Eversource leadership and the Aquarian leadership, we are moving forward to implement the vote that town meeting approved. So, anything? Michelle, anything? No? Okay. Okay, we voted that. I think we have a, we have a rock band vote to take. We don't take that every day.
Are they going to be performing?
I think they should have come and given us a little sample. So that's the last thing on my vote list. Would someone like to make a motion? Is this an entertainment license, or is this just a, we just allow them to play outdoor music?
Yes, it's something that the Hingham itself is doing, uh, Mother's Day celebration. They'll actually only be playing for like 75 minutes, so if you take a break, so we'll be a cool atmosphere as well, too. We've had bands down there before, it's one of their activities down there, they're trying to put a business on it and attract people.
And you're okay with the location and the hours?
Yeah, we went down, I went back, and I went down today, and we walked around, and we set up a thing, and we'll have the, I'll have an officer down there and barricade up that little corner by 14 Main Street, just to provide a safe area for people to congregate with, to the band.
Okay. I think there was something-
And area of love as well.
Yeah. I'll strike that.
It's the same group that said this was on the front page.
Yeah, I just saw them, yeah. It looks really fun. Yeah, okay. Any other-
Keep the noise down.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Anybody like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the request of Discover Hingham to hire a youth rock band to play music from noon to 2:00 PM on the corner of Main Street and South Street as part of the annual Mother's Day promotion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The one thing I didn't mention tonight is, we had an item on the agenda, Town War Memorial Stones relocation. Keith German has decided he'll come back later and present that, but I think the idea is to move certain of the memorial stones from the town center park out in front here to create, you know, I think, better visibility and, you know, just fill out, I think, what is a beautiful memorial in front of Town Hall. But I think that we'll continue to work with Keith on those efforts.
Okay. Appointments, we have none. Selectmen and Town Administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thomas?
Nothing tonight, thank you. Thank you. No, Paul.
Mary?
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to express appreciation to the Veterans Service Office, the Veterans Council, and the trustees of GAR Hall. Last week, the Hingham High School sophomore history class made its annual field trip to GAR Hall, and it was just, it was a wonderful program. I got the report from one of my children who was a student. He has been at GAR Hall before for many things, but said that it was just, you know, many different things were pointed out, he saw things in a different way, and just, you know, many thanks to everybody who made that happen. While we're on the school front, I'm just going to put two dates out there. On Wednesday, June 5th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at Hingham Middle School, the school administration will be holding a public reception in honor of Dr. Gallo's retirement. So, excuse me. So this is an opportunity for members of the community to come to congratulate Dr. Gallo, to wish her well. I'm sure there'll be more news on that. Carol, maybe the anchor can put that date out there. And Taste of Hingham is May 18th, which I think is next Saturday. That's so, that's-
A week from Saturday.
A week from Saturday, so that's, that's also coming up, so.
Spring is coming. All right. Joe?
I just want to reiterate what the Town Administrator spoke about in terms of getting public involvement in the transition for the Water Committee. I think that's very important, so I would urge, if you have any interest, to speak up, because we will be moving promptly.
Great. And my report on item is, on Monday evening, I went to the school committee meeting because the Board of Selectmen votes along with the school committee on certain collectively bargain-for agreements. This was with our food service workers, and we increased the minimum wage of that workforce to keep pace with increases in minimum wage here in the Commonwealth. So, all good. Anything else? All right. Accept a motion to adjourn?
So-
Did you, I'm sorry, sir. Did you have a comment?
Yeah.
State your name and address, if you would.
Mike Olivera. I'm the, one of the owners of Olivera Construction. I'm actually not a Hingham resident, but we're here because we were, we were told that as far as the Board of Water Commissioners are purchasing, we, colleague of mine, another contractor, we have open contracts with Aquarian, and we were told by Aquarian that no more streets were going to be done, but we weren't. We were also told that you guys were going to debate about whether or not to continue to do them, so.
So I, you know, that this item isn't on the agenda specifically, so I can't comment in great detail. I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline, and we'll say that we had a productive meeting this morning on this issue, and I'm, again, happy to talk to you offline about that.
Okay.
Thanks for being here, though. Anybody else? I would accept a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks. Good night, everybody.